Pelican Rapids City Council Meeting of 31 March 2020 is called to order. I'd ask for a gift as they come in and they would please sign in on the clipboard. And if you have a cell phone, if you would please put it on library. Roll call a member, Dan Young.
Councilmember Steve Strand, Councilmember Evan Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Kurt Markgraf.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Foster.
Here.
And Mayor Brent Fraser.
Here. Want to welcome each and every one of you this evening to our second council meeting. In March, our arrangement this evening is a little bit different than the teams in the past. Through the coronavirus, we're social distancing here, we're at least six feet apart in our meeting space. Those on Channel 14 will be seeing our council meeting on Wednesday evening. We are live this evening on Zoom so people can listen to our council meeting when it's happening. We're also just allowing a maximum of 10 people in our council chambers this evening. Announcements, I just have two of them. This Thursday, April 2nd, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. will be the City of Pelican Rapids Board of Review here at City Hall. And Tuesday, the 14th of April, at 5:00 p.m. will be our next city council meeting. At this time, we don't know if we're going to hear a city council table or if we'll conduct a Zoom meeting. Any other announcements? Any other announcements? Hearing none, if we'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is Citizens' comments. It's Citizens' comments. I see no one here in the audience for Citizens' comments. I'm gonna move on. Item number three is additions and deletions to the gym. I have one addition and one deletion. The first addition, we need to add a bullet point to item number 11 concerning pigeons. So add a bullet point in the title of the received ordinance find relating to pigeons. Received, the past ordinance finds relating to pigeons. And we are gonna delete item number 14, tourism conference and home and garden updates. Delete item 14, tourism conference and home and garden update. Any other additions or...
Move the agenda as amended.
Second that. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number four is approval of a consent agenda, which I'll read. Item 4A is approval of accounts payable listing. Item 4C, one is utilities report, and item 4C2 is liquor store report. Is there a motion for a review?
No move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. At this time, we'll go to item number five, people's service employee introduction. And Terry Gamble is gonna introduce a new employee here at Pelican Rapids Wastewater Plant. So wait on him to come forward.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Terry.
Hi, you?
Good. Good.
You're George.
This is our new employee, Dennis Gallagher. He's got, this family's got a history in town, a long time history.
I'm Dennis Gallagher. I'm from, originally from Starbuck Lenwood area. I came down here first of March. I actually have family from here, Howard Carlson family, was my uncle before he passed. So I figured, I seen the opportunity to come down here and I figured, why not give it a shot?
Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah.
Glad to have you.
Yep, you're a good guy.
Anything else, Terry?
Not nothing.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item number seven will go to City of Lakes.
Yeah, and there was a document in your packet that was provided to me by Otter Tail Power. And it's basically something that they had put together in response to the study that was provided the last council meeting, or two council meetings ago, from Dr. David Allison. So they just gave it to us for you guys to basically read through as just FYI, for your information. But, you know, kind of going forward with it, you know, I guess at this point, you know, he had shared the information regarding the options and stuff at the last meeting that he was here a month ago at. He was gonna come back last meeting, but due to an illness, he couldn't. And then this meeting too, with everything going on, they're trying to avoid as much social contact as possible. But I guess at this point, with the options that they went over and everything, and the council has had some time to review that stuff, and kind of think about, to whatever extent you guys did, is if you guys are to the point that you feel like we can move forward with the decision based on the option information they gave you, and I know that just from my standpoint and Street Department, the Street Department's standpoint, you know, our recommendation would be that the council take action tonight to go forward with turning these light systems back over to Otter Tail Power so they can start preparing for the 2024 project. Obviously, if we keep them, you know, there's gonna be some expense to us if we want to do anything prior to 2024, or if we wanted to upgrade anything now in our lighting systems if they're not working and we need to do things to get them working, it'll be at our expense if there's parts involved. But again, our recommendation would be to start moving forward with having, you know, turning them back over to Otter Tail. And I think that's what, what that would entail would be council taking that action tonight, and then I would contact Otter Tail Power to get whatever paperwork would be needed for future council to consider paperwork, you know, starting that process. If you guys aren't ready to do that at this point, what else do you need? Do you have more questions to where we could have Nathan or Nate come back to a future meeting, or Skype into, you know, or Zoom into a meeting? Whatever happens in the next, you know, next few council meetings is yet to be decided. But if you're ready to move forward, I can start that process if that's what you want to do.
Want to say something?
I guess everything in that report, I don't know about, but my question is, we turn this back to Otter Tail, we're gonna end up paying Otter Tail for the lights, right?
What he presented to you guys was turning them back over to Otter Tail, if I understand them right, or remember it right, they're just gonna add all the lights to our present light system and our present tier structure. But as far as paying for any new lights that they put in, that's kind of all built into that tier structure. Is that how you kind of remember it?
That's from the way I recall, yeah.
Yeah. So...
There was some talk of some early, you know, replacing something immediately somewhere. I don't remember what streets that was, but...
Well, it was, it was the, if there was decorative lights or something that needed to be replaced, the present ones, then they had a decorative option, just only one option at this point on their inventory, but they're looking to add a bunch of them. And so we could consider in 2024, when they start tearing out all the lights and everything for that street project, there might be other options for us to consider, or what they'll end up doing at that time if it's not done prior to that. And I don't, I really truly don't think that they're gonna come in here and take all of our decorative lights out and put those decorative lights in to only have them all removed in 2024. So I think, my understanding is that the lights, if we turn them back over to them and there are lights that do go out or whatever, like the new decorative ones, they have something that they can put in place prior to 2024 if need be. Otherwise, my understanding was when that new inventory of options came out for decorative lights, then we would have an opportunity to say, we like that one, that's the one we'd like to have put in when these are all taken out. As far as the regular standards that they have for the higher, not the decorative lights, but the regular, the Cobras, yeah, to start replacing those in the city that aren't LED right now because there are lights, and there were some of them, a dozen or whatever they were, they could start replacing those with the LEDs that are the Cobra ones that they've got everywhere else in town. And that they would start doing, because those wouldn't necessarily change when the 2024 project comes.
So if I, if I get it correctly, the whole idea then with this is we just get, put into it, it'll be a larger tariff system, but a tariff system. We don't have a lump sum cost for 37 new lights.
No.
Just a new tariff system and continue basically the way we've been going, with outdated pricing.
Correct. And then going forward, if there's during, between now and, you know, the 2024 project, working with them to see where we might want to add lights and stuff like that, that would just get all added to the tier. So instead of having, you know, 100 lights in our tier, we might increase it to 120 lights, and it would just, the cost per watt used or whatever is based on their tier. We add more lights and obviously the cost goes up, but it's all based on the number of lights within the tier or not. So again, we do know that these lights, their life expectancy is done. Getting parts for these systems, our decorative lights is pretty tough already. If we keep the lights, we know that there's gonna be a cost, a huge cost to the city. Even if we wanted to keep the lights and update just our existing decorative lights, I think he threw the number out there, three quarters of a million dollars to do it, to rip all that stuff out and put new ones in.
So I see us turning over the lights would be the most smoothest transition and most economically sound for the city of Pelican Rapids.
I think so, in the long run, based on what he was saying. So that's, Ryan and I would, the Street Department and I would recommend we do, but if you guys need more time, or you have more questions or whatever, that's understandable also. But the sooner that we make a decision, the better it is for them to start working with MINDOT and planning the replacement of the infrastructure that, if we turn it over to them, that infrastructure at the same time.
I'll move, we go ahead with this to, what is it?
To just start the process of transferring the lights over to...
Transfer it over to Otter Tail.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion.
Any idea of when this will start?
No, I can, I can have a conversation with Nate tomorrow and find out, and then I can surely put it on the agenda for next time, just to give you guys more of an update on the process and everything else.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is the same, motion carried. Item number eight is library slash city employees discussion. There was a handout in our packet this evening, and Don, you're gonna talk to that.
Yeah, what I wanted to just bring before the council, you had talked, we had talked the last meeting, this, the topic of the library employees, or the library came up. And so, and all, and to start looking at, you know, some of the discussion I believe had to do with employees versus not employees, that type of thing. And so what I did was I provided you with the actual Minnesota rule that kind of goes, talks about the process of doing a jurisdiction determination. And also, I met, had a meeting with the mayor and Wayne Runnegan, and the reason I wanted to meet with them is I wanted to sit down with Wayne, just to have a conversation about library in general, well, not in general, in three specific areas. And one of them had to do with this jurisdiction determination. The second one had to do with the furnaces, just to get a little bit more of an update on the furnace situation down there. And the third one was to talk about the budget and the wages. And so I shared with him this determination. We didn't, obviously, he couldn't speak for the library board as a whole, but what I shared with him about the determination was that this was, this was what I had come up with from talking to Minnesota Material Management and Budget, who oversee, especially the pay equity part of it, what they had kind of pointed me to. And so kind of here, here's what the process would be, whether the library board, I wanted the library board to, and Wayne, I thought it was just fair based on what our conversations up here were, so that they were at least, had some knowledge of what we had been talking about. This determination, if the council decides they want to go down this road, the other, the library board doesn't have to be on board with doing it, but I can tell you that if the council wants to do this, then when we put this request for determination into, with all the supporting documentation that we'd have to gather up, when we put it into the state, then what they would do, one of the first actions they do is they notify that other jurisdiction that this determination process has been requested, so that they're also on board with it. And whatever we provide them, I'm sure that the library board then would be able to turn around and, and comment on whatever we send in as, as, you know, here's the way that things are done, and they'll be able to take a look at it and comment on it also to make sure that they're in agreement, you know, yes, we do the budgets, yes, we do, you know, set wages, all that type, whatever, whatever it might be. And so then, I don't know how long that process takes, it could take some time, or it could go relatively quickly. At the end of the day, what might come out of it is, possibly what might come out of it is, from the standpoint of whether they are city employees or not, they may say, yes, they are city employees, but from the standpoint of pay equity, they are not. If that's what, and it may, it may just, everything may stay the same too, but if they say, from the standpoint of city employees, yes, they are, but for pay equity standpoint, they are not, because of the control the library board has in that, in certain areas, if that's what's determined, then they would just drop off of our pay equity reporting system, and the library would have to do their own. And they really, I don't know that that necessarily means a bunch of work for the library, they already have a structure. The structure was put in place and we did the wage study. That could just carry on. The difference would be, we wouldn't have to, and they wouldn't have to be concerned about the pay equity going forward, we wouldn't have to be worried about the pay equity going forward as it relates to what the library board wants to do with the employees down there and what the city council would wish to do up here. So it might, it might, if that's the determination, it might open up some flexibility for the library board and the council, because it seems like every time we do budgets, one of the concerns is always, how's the library, how's the library, if the, if the library employees get the same, if they, if they wish to do the same cost of living adjustments and everything that the rest of the city gets, employees get, how is the library gonna pay for it? How are they gonna cover that expense? Because nothing's been set in stone as far as whether the city will continue to fund the library to that extent, you know, et cetera. Because, you know, it's obvious what we've been talking about the last couple of years. So, so in doing the determination, it would, we would have some work to do to send stuff down to the state, and how it's gonna end up, we don't know. But that's one possible way it could end up, that they would just be considered not city employees for the sake of pay equity. So, you know, one of the things after we, after we get done sharing all this information with you guys is just decide whether the council wants to continue going down to see what this, would come out, what would come out of this determination. As far as the furnaces go, kind of an update that I've got on those is the furnaces have been repaired, and under the MOU, if you guys have read it recently, under the MOU, repairs to the furnace would be a library expense, but, because that's part of the maintenance and repair. But if the furnaces are gonna be replaced, that's a city expense. And as I understand it, they've been repaired, but them furnaces are the original furnaces. And so them furnaces, I believe, are gonna need to be repaired, replaced, which is a city expense, and I believe that those furnaces, oh, I shouldn't say I believe, I feel that those furnaces should be replaced before we go into another winter, because they're the original, and they had to, however, whatever climate makers, I don't know what they had to do to get them going, but I think they probably ended up just piecemealing some things and badmouthing some things and, you know, found some parts someplace. But I'd sure hate for them furnaces to go down again in the middle of next winter. So one of the things that I know we're gonna be building into the budget, or that I'm gonna be building into the budget for 2021, is to replace them furnaces in, at the library, at the city's expense. However, that'll be in the budget, but I don't think we need to wait, I don't think we should wait, I don't think it'd be wise to wait until 2021 budget to do that. So it'll be budgeted for, but it's probably gonna, I'm gonna recommend that we consider replacing them before this winter. So with that being said, I know that Wayne has got some, or the library has got some, a quote or a bid or whatever from climate makers who are familiar with the system, and they're gonna be getting that to Brian, the Street Department. And so at some point, we'll be, we'll know more about what, what the proposal was from climate makers, et cetera. So we'll hear more about that in coming, in coming meetings, possibly as soon as the next meeting.
Are they separate from the cooling system?
You know, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. I know Brian will have an answer for that. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that too, when we see that proposal and, and see what's on that proposal, we can, you know, have them questions. In fact, when Brian gets that, I'm sure, the proposal, I'm sure he's gonna have some conversations with climate makers too, so I will make sure that Brian asks him about the cooling, so that we have more information about the cooling system. Are they, are they together, or is this replacing that too, or really, should that be considered also at the same time? So...
Wouldn't that be our responsibility to get bids for that?
Well, yes, I feel that, but because climate makers, and we wouldn't have to get bids for it, just, you know, just get a proposal from climate makers, and because they've really already done that, climate makers has our service contract with, with all of our facilities, they also know our facilities. So even if it was us doing this, and the libraries already kind of did it because they were working on trying to get them repaired, if it was us, if it was just totally turned over to us, we would do the same thing. We would call climate makers and say, give us a proposal, because I think we would just want them to get the job done. But we would want to have a proposal that, from them, so we can at least have a conversation about what they're doing and have it on paper, and that's what the library's done. So we'll just start with theirs and then go from there, looking into the AC as Kevin asked about and stuff too. But we'll, we'll get the information to Brian, or my understanding is Wayne was gonna get the information to Brian, and if it's about replacing them, based on the MOU, it's city's responsibility to do that. I, again, I don't know how the library board feels about it, but because it's, it's part of the building, it's part of the capital replacement of the building, in my opinion, it's a city council decision, but I guess the library board can have conversations about that when they meet too. As far as the budgets go, one of the things that I wanted to sit down and talk to Wayne about was the information that was provided to the council at the last council meeting, specifically as it relates to the table that was put together by the library director, showing that based on her calculations, there was gonna be, the city had already given the library for 2020 a $4,000 increase, and what she had presented showed that they were gonna need another $4,800 on top of the $4,000 to cover for the 2020 wages. And when I sat down and I took a look at the numbers, I couldn't come up with the same numbers. And so what I did was I just started with, or went to what they had in wages, what they had spent in wages in 2019, and then I just based that off a 4% increase, because that's what the other cost of living adjustments to the other employees were. And the number I came up with, based on just their actuals plus 4%, and then calculating it out, I come up with a total need of $6,800 if they basically spent all the money in the budget for that. And so I, I sat down and showed Wayne how I came up with my numbers, and I wasn't taking into account necessarily right away, I was just figuring it out. At $6,800, then I went back and I looked at what they actually spent in 2019, and looked at if they were on budget, over budget, under budget. And my, my calculation, I came up with $6,800 and some change, but $6,800 bucks. And then we already gave them $4,000, and they underspent their salaries, wages, and all that stuff by $3,800. So if you take that into account, they wouldn't, definitely wouldn't need, her $4,800, my $2,800, and the fact that they underspent by 38, they should have had enough to cover it. So in talking with Wayne, his comments were me, to me, were centered around the fact that last year, they were short-staffed at times, so they're, they're kind of wondering if really the budget wouldn't have came in higher than it actually did. But the fact that they were short-staffed, his, his comment was they were short-staffed, which reduced the actuals, but on the flip side of that, Annie also, or the library director also filled in for the short-staffed, you know, the short-staffed nature of the library at times. Wayne said not all the time, but at times. So I still question whether the budget would have come in, even if with Annie, with the library director covering at times, if their budget still would have came in any different than it did. Long story short, at the end of the day, what it amounts to is, if the, if the library employees are city employees, and for the sake of the state, any determination of the state, they probably are city employees. If we want everybody to have the same cost of living adjustment so that, so that we're fair to everybody as city employees, then obviously the library potentially, potentially could need more to cover 2020. The question is whether the council would feel comfortable with taking action to, to at least say, we're going to cover whatever cost of, whatever additional funds the library would need to cover the salary, wages, and benefits for 2020. It might be, if Annie's right, excuse me, the library director's right, it could be $4,800. If I'm right, it could be $2,800. If neither one of us are right and they come in under budget, then it could be less than that.
So the greatest amount would be $4,800?
Well, we don't know that for sure, but, but one of the things the council could consider doing is just saying, you know what, at the end of the year, you know, we will definitely consider... what, at the end of the year, you know, we will definitely consider covering any additional wages up to $4,800. And if it does go over that amount, then we open up the conversation again. And then, but then at the end of the year, I would expect that they would provide us with, you know, which they kind of did, you know, at the end of the year, the actuals. The other thing that, so that we can see how much short they were, how much long they were, you know, and that type of thing, too, to make a determination as to how much more they would need. The other part of it is 2021. Because in 2021, there's going to be another cost of living adjustment. So they're going to be coming, just like they have the last couple of years, and they're going to say, you know, this is what the council has given to the city employees, so would you consider also covering 2021? One of the things about 2021 that kicks in is potentially, is going to also be the health insurance, HSA contributions, is going to be brought up at the end of this year, going into 2021 also. So, you know, they're going to, there's going to be, if we do everything the way we've done it in the past, there's going to be another, by a $6,000 increase to the library. So at some point, is it, just so the library knows where the city stands, at some point, could we get to a position where the city is going to cover the wages and benefits, FICA, et cetera, of the library employees down there, and make sure that they don't have to worry about that part of it? And then, you know, the rest of the budget would, you know, have to, their budget would have to cover the books and all that stuff. I'm not saying we just cover the wages and they just cover the books and all the other things that aren't wages and employee benefits. But if, like for this year, for instance, if that would have been the position we took last year, their total budget, I think, you know, with what the city had given them, based on what they're, what they actually spent in 2019, and what we provided the library, they would have had way more. I mean, we gave them way more than they needed just to cover benefits, wages and benefits. But does it seem reasonable that, just to kind of end these conversations every year, we could get to a point where the council says, you know, we are going to for sure cover wages and benefits of the employees down there? The rest of it might become talking points, but potentially. And but without, and having saying that, too, I'm not suggesting that we have budgeted $188,000 in 2020. I'm not suggesting that, you know, we stay, you know, we got that $188,000, and at the end of the year, if their wages and benefits only come out to $178,000, that, you know, we strip $10,000 grant, you know, $10,000 from them. My, you know, I'm still saying, we're at $188,000 is what we did in 2020. If that covers plus, you know, in addition, does more than just their wages and benefits, that it would stay there. But in the grand scheme of things, is there a point we can, we can get to a point where the council's going to get, say, we will cover wages and benefits for the library employees down there? I guess, you know, I don't know where to go with that. Again, the library, the library board hasn't talked about, I think their next meeting, they're planning on talking about the COLAs for the library, and based on what they had given us, last meeting on that spreadsheet, you know, they were looking at, to make sure things could get covered, they were looking at 2%, not the 4% the other employees got. And, you know, in all fairness, because, you know, to put them in a position like that, in all fairness, I think we, I would like to see the 4% covered, but also figure out some way of doing the wages and benefits for the library, in light of this, trying to do this determination stuff, or we can still do the determination stuff. But if they do 2%, we do 4%, next year we do something else, they do 2% less, eventually that pay equity is going to come back to bite us. And to pass pay equity, they're going to have to get bumped up anyway, if they're going to be our pay equity employees.
If they go that way.
Correct.
They can go the other way, too.
You're talking about the determination from the state?
No, I'm talking about the determination from the library. They could decide they're going to give 5% or 4% when we're giving 2%. So one of the problems I see with it is, is if we're going to give, say, 3% to our city employees, nothing we can do can lock the library into whatever they can do.
That's correct. But one of the things that the library obviously is doing is looking at their budget to determine what they can do as far as wages go. That's why they're thinking, you know, maybe 2% now.
And if your figures are correct, that they had a surplus left over, then they're covered this year. But I've looked at their budget, and to me, there are certain things about it that are pretty opaque.
Yeah, it's hard to understand, to follow the budget.
I mean, they've got transfer from savings and other things, and, you know, it's kind of difficult to figure out. And I guess one of the things I would like to see is a determination if they're city employees or not.
We could okay the 4% pay raise for this year, in the process, make, have the state make the determination if they are city employees.
Well, and you can, yeah, you could even go as far as, if you still want to do the determination, we can do the determination, but also instead of just setting a figure, you know, we will give them the $4,800 that they think they're going to need, it could be an up to, you know, up to that amount. But still, I think it should be something that, at the end of the year, let's get the numbers and see how it all shook out.
And I do think we have to make, get that determination if they are city employees or not.
Yeah. But if we, you've talked a lot about fairness, in all fairness to the employees, in all fairness to the other employees, the library staff gets benefits, but the other employees don't. In all fairness. So, I mean, if we're going to be across the board, then we should be across the board.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I, that's a, that is a library board decision and how they would, I know at one point, it was going to be looked into and discussed. I don't know to what extent, because it's never been reported back. But I agree, I agree with you. I think that it should be across the board all the way. I think the part-time employees down there rightfully shouldn't get anything the other part-time employees don't get, so. And maybe, you know, maybe that somehow has got to get worked into all of this also. Maybe, I don't know how the, I've got some thoughts about how the library board could do it, but I'll let them, have them discussions and maybe have an opportunity to talk to Wayne about it at some point, but, or Kurt, you being on the library board, just some ways they could implement that or do it. But I don't even know if you guys have even talked about it, and you guys have said we're not changing that, I don't know.
So are you looking at two avenues, avenues of guidance? The first one is related to the determination?
Yes.
And the second one is related to the pay?
To the extent that you guys would consider helping out with the cost of, cost of living adjustment that the library board would consider, yeah.
How do we go forward with the determination process?
Motion second? Discussion? Discussion? Hearing not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the statement?
Motion carried.
The second one deals with the wages for 2020?
Yeah, so again, they, the director's figure was $4,800 and some dollars. I came up with $6,800. I was basing it off of, or I was coming up with $2,800 and something, but I was basing it off of the actuals, where she was basing it off of what she thinks, what she, what her budget was going to, where she thought she was going to land in her budget. And so somewhere in between that.
Well, since we don't know, maybe the best thing we could do is wait on that one.
But if, I think, because they want to talk about it and make a determination, and maybe it can be waited, you know, still can wait on it. I think they were going to be talking about it. I don't know if you guys are going to make a decision, or if they were going to make a decision on a COLA at the next meeting, or if it was going to go out, further meetings before they decided. I just thought maybe if the council was comfortable with making some determination as far as potentially, like say, for instance, up to 48, but we want to see the numbers at the end of the year, at least they would know going into their meeting, that you guys are willing to move a little bit, and that might help them decide what they're going to do this year, as opposed to not doing anything right now. Their next meeting, whenever it is next week or whatever, they may basically set it at a lower than they would if they had some, some sense of whether the council would move.
Right. We, as a.
Mark, are you raising your hand?
All I can add to that is we haven't had, as you know, our next meeting since the last one, when I came up here. And I can't guess what the board is thinking or wants to do at this next meeting, but I know at the last meeting, they were pretty much decided on a 2% because four wasn't, four wasn't there as far as we could understand on the budget. So that said, that's when I stepped in and asked, can we wait? Will I come up to the next city council meeting? And well, that's all history. What went on, went on, and here we are now. But I don't know what the board will do. I have no guess. I haven't spoken with anybody for our next meeting. I would assume they'd like to make a decision, you know, but if it didn't happen, I couldn't, I couldn't hazard a guess.
So is anyone here comfortable with putting a figure out there up to this amount we would give them for 2020?
Well, if we can put it to bed, I'm comfortable with it, but I don't, I mean, that would cover us for the year. And then everything else, as far as the jurisdiction determination could work its course. You know, it's going to anyway work its course, but at least we'd have some idea.
And it's, it's fine with just leaving it where it's at right now, too, and we can continue to have the conversation. I know it just creates a little bit more work. If you guys do a cost of living, and then at the end of the day, after the determination and everything else, we have to adjust it again, that's just a little more work for Danielle, is all. And it doesn't necessarily mean that would have to be retroactive to January 1 either, but.
So I guess if we don't hear any nominations or motions here?
I'll make a motion that we provide what Don had suggested. And that's all I can do from here.
Which would be basically up to, up to 48, if that's, you know, whatever that number was that was on, $4,800 and some odd dollars, if that's what's needed at the end of the year.
Motion is there second? Second? I'll second. No comments? Discussion? Discussion? Discussion?
I'm sure you do. Ballard?
Marka?
Yay.
Foster?
Nate.
Yeah. Okay, tires or fill?
Okay.
Okay, anything else or done?
No.
We'll move on to item number nine, city COVID-19, food discussion and city pandemic plan, which was in our packet. Do you want to speak to that, Don?
Yes, lots of stuff. The first thing I want to do is I kind of want to go over what the city has been basically working on since all this stuff has transpired. We have, I'm turning that goofy thing out. Okay, well, I'll just go without that. We've basically, the city has met almost on a daily basis, we've had conversations about the city operations. And I don't know if you guys have seen it or not, but on the city website is a, is a listing of all of the city facility or operations as it relates to the, what each facility is doing. Excuse me for stumbling here, I'm trying to get to it. But, so on there, we list out each department, and this is, has been kind of a result of the conversations with the department head, it's also been a result of conversations with the emergency management team that was, that was established at the last council meeting. So each one of the, each one of the facilities is listed on there, and it kind of is an update, and we keep it updated, how, from an operational standpoint, what are they doing? I also shared information with the library director and chairman Wayne Runnigan, so that they had an opportunity to kind of comment on a section that was in our pandemic plan. And then I just kind of put a short little piece on the website as it pertains to the library. And so all the departments are on there, and where they're at with trying to abide by the Department of Health recommendations for being in the workplace, personal hygiene and that type of thing. We've spent a lot of time talking about the utility billing process, and, you know, just because of all the things we're seeing out there, and whether it's, you know, people being laid off and that type of thing, and some of the positions that we've taken in the utility department, so that, so that it's a little bit safer for, as it relates to social distancing and personal hygiene for our employees, also the community out there with us going to their places. Right now, we're not doing any shut-offs. So for late payments or anything like that, people will not be shut off. We'll still go through the process, there'll still be fees and, you know, late fees and that type of thing on the bills, added to the bills, but we're not going to shut people off for lack of payment. One reason is, we want everybody to wash their hands, et cetera, and so they need water to do that. We also are getting requests from snowbirds coming back to turn their water back on, and, you know, we are doing that. So we'll go out if we need to, again, using social distancing and all that stuff to get the water turned back on for individuals. We talked about different ways of paying the bills, you know, trying to encourage people to, the community to think about other ways besides coming into city hall to pay their utility bills. And, you know, we've got four different ways of doing it, and as I talk, we'll kind of get a little bit deeper into that stuff. So we continue to have conversations about what we're going to continue to do at the operational level. One of the things that we also have been working on is the city's, City of Pelican Rapids continuity of operations plan for pandemic. It was something that's kind of part of our emergency management documents. And when I put this plan together, I had distributed it to the fire department, and again, like I had mentioned, the library, you've seen the library section of it. And I want to take a little bit of time to just kind of go through and explain what's in this plan and kind of what it's trying to accomplish. But for the most part, it starts out with, you know, just some background, why. out with, with, you know, just some background why, you know, why we need such a plan as it relates to pandemics of any kind, but has some definitions in it. It talks about the emergency planning assumptions, because whenever you plan for stuff, you don't know necessarily all the things that could crop up. So there are assumptions that we had to make in doing this. But then it gets into, and I am really jumping through it rather quickly, but it gets into one of the sections, it, it sets up a priority of service scenario or situation, I guess. And in that priority of service, A, B, C, and D, you know, lists them as service priority one, two, three, and four. And it just pertains to if, if a service is needed, regardless of the situation, how important is it, or what, what is a priority of it. And so that establishes that priority, the priority levels or thresholds. And then it talks a little bit about the leaves as it relates to employees. There's an employee section in there. As it relates to vacations, sick leave and that type of thing. It talks about some of the, some of the situations or staffing and scheduling situations that might come up. We might end up having to move employees from one, one organization or department to another. We might have to cancel or delay or change vacations, all that type of thing. Then it gets into kind of a employee health and safety part of it, which, which relates to, for our employees, when, when they're coming to work, or if they start feeling certain illnesses or something like that, or, or symptoms, we want them, we give them a process in which to basically report it right away to their supervisor. And then if they're on duty when that happens, we will send them home right away. We advise them to get ahold of their doctor if the symptoms are similar to the symptoms you would see during this, this particular pandemic situation, just like they do what you're seeing in, in, in all kinds of different, I guess, documentation out there regarding this, this thing that we're going through with the pandemic. And then it gets into departmental plans, and in that particular section, it breaks it down into legislative, administration, community development, finance, fire department, human resources, library, police department, public works. And it just talks about the importance of each one of those in continuing those operations during this type of an event. It lays out basically staffing levels needed, minimum staff requirement, skills, that type of thing, and it goes through the whole, each one of those departments accordingly. The fire department and Trevor has basically looked at this document, this document too, and his is actually probably the longest section of it, because the fire department, as it relates to their interactions and continuing of operations is priority number one in the city, because they've got a lot of things that they've got to deal with, with fires and first responders and everything else. So that's what the document kind of entails. So a situation like this comes up, we've got something to go on at this time and going forward when we have situations and pandemic similar to this have, have occurred or are occurring. So what I'd like to do is, without spending a whole lot more time on it, because I've got some other things I want to talk about, it was in the packet, you had a chance to look it over, I would like council to approve it, take action to approve this as our official plan. And obviously, it's something that we will continue to look at, maybe revise or whatever, but I think with the emergency management team, the different department heads that have all looked at this thing, and have all basically, in a sense, stamped, signed off on it, I would recommend the council also take action to make it our official pandemic plan.
Is there a motion?
Well, before we do that, one point of discussion. Brent, Don, and I sat in on the meeting. For those of you that weren't there, have you been able to read it or not?
I did read it.
So it, you know, it spells out what the different department heads are, or what the different areas are, and what their areas of essential service are, which I thought were pretty well covered. Are there any questions on that?
This is a living document. I mean, things will change on this as time progresses. Do the departments change? Does the situation change?
But I guess if there's not any concerns about that, then I will move that we accept this document.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second? Discussion? Discussion?
Are there any other concerns from either Councilman Ballard or Markraft about that, or questions, or?
And I've got definitely more to share. I just need that first.
Nope, not for me.
Any other discussion? During that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same. More than carried.
Now, we have the emergency declaration that was done. We've got an approved plan. You know, we've been having a lot of conversations about where we go forward with the operations and City Hall specifically. Some of the things that I've been working on, based on the governor's action that he took too with his executive order 2020, part of it in there was talking about critical sectors that are exempt from basically not operating. And wastewater, water, public works are exempt from that executive order, as is City Hall. So one of the things that he says in executive order is even though these, these different areas are considered critical sectors, if they can work offsite and work from home, they must do so. You take that for whatever, the must do so for whatever you want. But, so what we've been working on is trying to set things up so that we can work remotely. And to this point, I've got all of the city's staff in, in the, in Danielle's office and myself are all capable of working from home on laptops and remoting into our systems here. So we technically are, are, could go home, and we wouldn't skip a beat as far as, as the work we have, because we just log into our computers, and it's just as if we're, if we're at our desk working on the computers. Our phone systems also can be set up, or are set up, so that we can work from home. And so with a little bit of training yet to go, one of the things that we would like to do, or are planning to do, is potentially as early as starting next week, we will be working remotely from home. Having said that, to the public, we will still be accessible by phone, by email, and if somebody really needs to have a face-to-face meeting, we can, they can schedule an appointment. And I had talked earlier about, a little bit about the utility department, and, you know, how we kind of see that moving forward, because we do have a lot of people in our community that come and pay with cash. And so the discussion we've had about that is, instead of having them come in and pay in City Hall with cash, they can put it in the Dropbox. And part of the, part of this process is to get the information out there so that they know, you know, that they can put, because up till now, there's a sign on the Dropbox that says no cash. But to change that so that, so they put cash in there, we're still going to say no coins. But part of this process is getting the information out there to them so that, so that they realize that they can put cash in, in their envelope with the top part of the utility bill, seal it shut, put it in there, and even encourage them to, you know, round up to the next whole dollar amount. And whatever they pay, that's over the amount owed to the next dollar amount, that would just be credited to their account for the next bill. So to get that kind of education piece out there, you know, we have a, have a document that we're going to be sharing. In fact, what I want to do is, the emergency management team thought it would be good to have this available for the city council to look at real quick. It's not real long, but that you guys could have a chance to read it.
Thank you.
Comment on it, and then if you want to make any changes, or think, if you want to add anything to it, we can do that. But this is kind of our, our take on it right now. And it kind of gives the community some direction on, okay, our facilities are closed, but we are still accessible. The police department's going to, would still function as they function today. The street department would still be at work every day doing what they do. Liquor store obviously would stay open. That was, I think, I don't know if that was, that wasn't listed on the, the governor's list of, of critical sectors, but the liquor store would stay running as it, as it is currently. Library has already done what, what, you know, what they're going to, what they're going to do down there. So in a sense, basically this language just says, it lets them know that the facility's closed, but we're still available. The website again has the phone numbers of all the, all the, all the different departments on it, and they can still call them departments. At the bottom, there's our main switch line too, 7076, if they have any questions about this or whatever. But I think based on what we have here, it kind of does let people know that we're going to be closed, and they can still pay their utility bills. Here's the different steps you could go through to do that. And one of the things that we had talked about or thought about was making sure that we have this in our posting places. We would also have it at City Hall, and we would also share it with West Central Turkeys, so that they could do the steps through their HR to make sure that their employees could do it in, you know, employees receive it in all the different languages that they could provide up there.
Where are hosting places now?
Here in the laundry.
And the voting, so we're going to have to look through.
Well, we would basically put it on the window here.
Yeah, I'll put it on the outside door. I put it on Facebook. I put it on the website too, just to figure it out there. But yeah, I can put a liquor store on there.
It would be on the face, on the website and, and Facebook for sure, too, also.
Would the Dropbox be serviced?
What Danielle has mentioned was basically on a daily basis, she would have a time, a slot of time that each one of her department would come in to, to check, to get the mail, bring the mail in, to come in, check the Dropbox, bring all the utility bills in, and, and deal with those. So it would be done on a daily basis.
At the beginning of the day and end of the day is kind of what I'm thinking.
Because there are still things that we cannot do without coming up here. So there will be, there will be staff coming in and out here on a daily basis. We will just basically be operating from our remote locations. The other, the other thing too, as you're kind of looking at that, thinking about that, is we talked about the parks and the, and the trails in, in the city. And the parks and the trails, based on the governor's order too, or similar to the governor's order, they will stay open, but the playgrounds are going to be closed. And we're in the process now of putting together how we're going to basically kind of rope them off or whatever with signage on them, so that, so that people know that the playgrounds aren't accessible, but the shelters still will be at this point. But we're going to put signage on them, just letting people know, if you're here and going to use this, please adhere to social distancing and other Department of Health recommendations to keep yourself from being exposed at this point.
That's already been done at this point.
Yeah, the committee already did that and, and made that decision, and that's, that them actions are being taken now to get that stuff marked off for the time being. So, and you, you guys can, you know, basically take this, if you, you know, obviously, and, and look at it. If you, if you have any thoughts or ideas, you can surely get, get in touch with us. We don't see this actually as far as City Hall making the drastic change to shut down until the end of the week, and possibly, you know, start Monday at the earliest, just because we've still got a little bit more training to do on the phone system, and making sure that this information gets out to where it needs to go before we actually do that.
Are we going to send a note, this out with the water bills, or?
We can. No. The next ones go out not until, yeah, per month.
Nearly the end, hopefully, of all this.
Yeah. So, so we've already missed that opportunity.
Just run with it.
Let me write that down.
We'll get it out there.
Yeah. One of the things I think, we've got other phone numbers we use, right?
No, not with this new phone system. This is the phone that basically people call to, and we have extensions inside, but it has to all run through that.
Okay, all right.
Obviously, the police department's phone number is different.
Yeah, maybe.
We could list that on here.
Maybe that should be listed, and under this 70, 76 number, we should list those the extensions for.
Well, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to get us by dialing the sections. They just have to go 7076.
Right.
And then they would ask for whoever they need, and they get passed on to that extension internally.
I don't know that I agree adding the police department's number to this, unless you're going to specify somewhere for police calls only, or for an emergency or whatever. Otherwise, you're going to have the police department drive around town, fielding City Hall calls, and they're not going to be able to answer the question. It will happen.
That's a good point. That's a good point. And most people, they know if they need the police department, it's online. If they need an emergency, they don't call PD anyway. They call 911. So yeah, that's a good point. We probably, probably better to leave it off. And, you know, another thing too, to get this out, it's, it's Tuesday. I know we already missed Lou's deadline, but, you know, we could have him put, put this in the paper, just like this.
Possibly you could add it to your, to your website.
You could have a Saturday edition.
I think that would, I think that would be a great, great idea to, to have him do it, put it on there, at the center, and then everybody would see it also, or wherever it makes sense for, for the press to do it.
I know you get a lot of, you get a lot of coverage on your website when you put up your posts.
Danielle, you know how many followers we have on our Facebook page now?
Of course it has. So does the council have any comments or concerns to the strategy as we move forward?
I agree completely with, just since the ability is there to, to work remotely, I think it's well warranted.
Any other comments? You need a motion on this?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, any other comments, or hold on?
Well, I got one more thing. I mean, just as part of all of this emergency stuff. One of the things that we, we, we don't know where things are going to go for the next council meeting. I don't know if we'll be here, or if we're going to basically be having you guys just, right now, what's going through my mind is you're probably going to be, you know, coming in through Zoom. But there's also the possibility that if we have nothing pressing that has to be acted on, the council meetings could possibly be canceled. But what can't be canceled is paying our bills. And so for the sake of getting through this thing, this pandemic ordeal and everything, I would like the council to consider acting tonight to allow the staff to pay bills based on emailing a copy, because if we don't have a meeting, emailing a copy of the bill listing if we need to via your, all your city emails. So you get a copy of the bill listing, and you wouldn't do a reply all, but you'd look at it and then reply, the bill listing looks okay, go ahead and pay. That way, when we hear from you guys that, in that way. That way, when we hear from you guys that, in that way, her staff can basically still pay bills without us having a council meeting to do it. That would basically be something we would do only if we have to, if there's nothing else going on and we cancel the council meeting, but we still have to pay bills. And it would only be during this situation. It wouldn't be forever ongoing. It would just be during this...
Yeah, there's some city councils in Minnesota now have canceled all their meetings for April, and they're just paying bills, you know, after we came in.
So we're still involving you, but we just want to be able to send you the bill listing, and you guys reply to that email whether it looks okay or not.
Do you like a motion or not?
I would.
Yeah.
If you feel fine doing it.
I'll make that motion. For a second. Second. Second.
Question. So by that motion, we're, we're making that decision to go ahead with that and do that, or we will still have an agenda put together? If there's an agenda, we'll still have a meeting, or?
If, if there, if there's an agenda and there's a meeting, and even might be the meeting is remote, you guys are all at home on Zoom, then we won't need to do that. The only way we'll do this is if a meeting's been canceled because there's nothing really to, of an urgent matter to talk about. If there's no council meeting and we still need to pay bills, this would be our way to get the bill listing to you guys and get an okay to pay them. That's it.
I'm not saying this is the only way.
That's it.
This is an option.
In the event that there are no other matters that need to be discussed, I'll second.
Any more discussion? Harry Noneall?
Wait a second here. One of the things I'd like to see is a date on there, and if we have to go beyond that, then we can add to it.
Say that again?
A date.
Yeah, so basically, for the month of April.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, for the month of April, and we'll have to revisit it the end of April.
The second thing, I would prefer to keep it as much business as normal. I mean, and I'm not discounting the severity of the situation we're in in any means or way, but I think as leadership, we've got to continue to meet, and we, you know, we've got to continue to do some things. So... I guess...
Yeah, I'd amend my motion to that.
Goes along with what I said, provided there's no other business that needs to be discussed. Yeah, absolutely.
So is there, is there a motion to approve the amendments?
Is the amendment putting a date on it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Need a motion?
Hold the amendment. Then we'll prove the motion.
There was a motion on the floor, so we'll need to...
Why don't you do this in such a confusing manner, Brett? When you make motions, I don't know what you're doing. So I will make a amendment to this, that we put the end of April as an amendment to your motion.
Yeah, I agree to that. And Kirk did also. So now we have, now we have to...
That's, has nothing to do, whether you agree or not, to my amendment. If I get a second to...
There's a motion on the floor.
You made a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, so we got to...
Right, you can amend the motion.
Yeah, but it has to be approved by those that made the motion.
No, it doesn't. You have an amendment, the amendment gets voted on either up or down. If I get a second to my amendment, then the main motion that you made is amended.
Danielle?
So is there a second to my, to my amendment?
I'll make that a second.
Okay. So the end of April now is, if we have to go beyond that, then we have to do this all over again.
Correct. All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold his name? Motion, Carrie.
Yes.
That was just the amendment that we...
No, the amendment. So now we have the motion on the floor.
The motion is to allow staff to pay bills in the event that no other items are on the agenda.
Until the end of April.
Yes, we, yes, with the amendment, until the end of April.
Okay. All in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Hold his name? Motion, Carrie.
One last comment. In order for us to, there's some work that's got to be done, and I figured I'd mention it since all you guys are here. There's some work that's got to be done on your parts in order for you guys to be part of a off-site, remote council meeting involving Zoom. You've got your tablets that were handed out. Those could be used, but if you've got a laptop, that could be used. I've got to basically get you guys, if you're going to use, use the tablets, do whatever you need to do to, to download Zoom on it, or you can basically just use the link that would be sent to the councilman to log in. But we should practice it. And we can't do it as a council, but individually. We should make, make some time to get together and do that before the next council meeting.
That will be, that will be Zoom?
Oh, wait a minute, no. So, don't we have to have council action, whether we're going to determine if we're having a meeting via Zoom other than... I agree with Steve. I, I think we should, we were elected to be here, and we should try to do stuff as normal as possible, as long as possible, and if we start closing City Hall and not picking up speedos because of social distancing, and we're, we start doing all this stuff, where, I mean, how do you, when do you stop? I mean, when do you stop backing up? And I get it. I, I, people are afraid, people are concerned, but I, I think people will get more concerned and more afraid if they see the people that they have elected to, to do stuff, throw in their stead, to start hiding under the covers at home and, and, I don't know. I, I, I think we should be right here.
I think what Donna's asking is if we could make time to come up here individually and learn the process of getting on.
Oh, yeah. But much like our road, much like our road project, it, it already seems like things are already being decided for us, and, and that we just need to show up and do this so that our next meeting will be on Zoom.
I, I agree completely that we should be here when possible. However, I still think it's a good idea for each of us to be prepared to enter a meeting in Zoom in the event that we have to be self-quarantined. We can still function.
So as long as it's clear that we are learning how to potentially use Zoom as an alternative, should it ever come to that, rather than our next meeting's going to be on Zoom.
I hope that wasn't the intent. That's why I mentioned, you know, if there's more...
But that's what I've heard, is if the next time or the next meeting is, is, I'm fine with learning how, hey, anytime I can learn to use this other than to look at a city, yeah, whatever, but I just, I, I, I think we need to try to be as normal as possible, as long as possible. And if we start pulling, running away and hiding and not doing what we're supposed to be doing, I think we're a disservice. We might as well just pack it up and let Jeff run the place.
I just want to say that there are many cities that are doing this. And I know all this, that doesn't mean anything, but the county is doing it. You know, they're not coming up for the local board of appeal that we have on Thursday because of this. The commissioners are no longer meeting because they want to, they're doing that all over Zoom. School board's doing it all over Zoom. So I, I get that you want to be as normal as possible, but I don't think the public thinks that this is not normal right now, because this is the new norm, doing these meetings this way. But on another note, I think that we do have to offer Zoom for the meetings, at least for the public, because, example, today, we had somebody that wouldn't show up because they were not comfortable coming here with this many people here. They did not want to come to the meeting. If we would have offered them Zoom, then they probably would have.
So it's possible to make Zoom a part of the meeting while we are here?
You're on Zoom right now?
Yep, that's what daddy...
Just audible, though.
Right.
Yes, we're just doing, yeah.
But like the council and Mark, I've mentioned that, you know, if one of us would come in, we could, if we learn the process, we could zoom in for the meeting and participate.
Yeah, because if you're home for two weeks, self-quarantining or whatever...
I mean, that's, that's not a stretch, I think.
Does this person that didn't want to come, do they know we have Zoom tonight?
No. This was kind of, I mean, it was something he was working on, but we didn't, they may. I mean, it, when I talked to them last, it was not going to be this way. And so she, she just asked to be removed from the agenda. It wasn't anything pressing, but she just was not comfortable.
I think it was more about social distancing.
Yes.
So Donna's looking for us, if we can make, if we can come up here and learn the process, in case we should have to use it.
And you don't even check if we need to come up here, just put it on your vice, or talk to me on the phone, and I'll connect up with you at your house.
So I can leave this with you, and you can have it all ready to go by the time I come back? Or you can send it home with a receptionist tomorrow?
I know on those tablets...
We're safe coming up here.
I know on those tablets, the password for the tablets is required to download stuff on them. If I have your password, great. If I don't have your password, and you forgot it, then forget that thing, but you can, you can...
I haven't done anything to make that, to make my bad one, so...
Give it to your wife, she'll, she'll figure it out for you.
Okay, any more on this topic?
No.
Okay, move on. Item number 10, Hunter T. Conroy requests to remove late fees on utility bills in the cabinet.
Do we have people waiting outside?
Who's here?
We've had people from six waiting out, so we're going to let them.
Ballard?
Yep.
Kate and Ballard.
Yeah, you can bring them. Well, excuse me. We'll leave item 10 for now, we'll move item number 13. Can I sneeze?
I see Brady has these dates down here for the street shutdown. Is that going to be over the project, or getting close to it, or no?
Okay, we have Kate Wolf, and Martinez, and Brady Ballard here to speak to item number 13.
Just Brady speaking about 13.
Say again?
Just Brady is speaking about 13.
Okay.
Kate's 15.
Take it away, Brady.
All right. Well, originally, I came here looking for permission for raffles for our spring fling for the fire department. The JCs are going to host it and sponsor it for them. Now, whether or not we still have it or not, all, all we're kind of looking for is the JCs are sponsoring the raffle part, and I just need a signature from a city authority, you know, just, is, for getting our raffle permit. I don't know for sure if we're postponing or what's going to happen yet with that. The second thing would be if everything goes as planned for the street dance for the JCs, looking to the shutdown for that Friday to Sunday, the 26th through the 28th of June. Also with the street dance, looking for, I got to get a signature to do a raffle for that street dance. We're going to do, we're going to postpone our spring raffle for the JCs and move that to the street dance. So basically, it's just signatures and then approval for a street shutdown for the JCs part.
Street is West Mill?
West Mill.
So let's address the first item, the raffle at the...
Yep.
We need a motion on that.
So are you having it or not having it?
I don't know yet.
Still doing the raffle.
We can still do the raffle portion of it.
We have some tickets sold, if I, yeah.
Yeah, so we still have to go forward with the raffle. It's just the approval. Actually, we already have the raffle tickets and stuff. It's just send stuff back to the state.
I'll move the approval of the raffle for 4/25/2020 for JCs.
Second, motion, second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Noneall, in favor, say if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Hold his name? Motion, Carrie. Second one is the shutdown of West Mill for the Pelican Fash and All Soy Raffle. Correct, Brady?
Yep. I'm assuming that's five, you have 6/28/2020 AM. Yeah, 6/26 of Friday, we're going to shut the street down and set up. It'll be closed up until that Sunday morning. We'll reopen it and get the street cleaned back up on the 28th.
And I know that, I talked to Brian Olson, and we're, because of that event, we're not going to be doing anything on that street until after July, July 1. So it's not going to interfere with what they want to do.
I move to approve the shutdown of West Mill, 6/26/2020 to 6/28/2020.
Second that.
Motion, second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Harry Noneall, in favor, say if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Hold his name? Motion, Carrie. Thank you, Brady.
Thank you.
Kate, you are here for the...
Pool update.
Item number 15.
Hey, everybody.
Pool committee updates in addition of members.
So the first part was just that, I think everybody's aware, but just to recap, the pool committee is now working with West Central Initiative to hold funds. And so with that being said, we did receive, I think you all saw that in the paper, the half million dollar donation from the person living out in Seattle, Washington. And she gave an additional pledge of another half a million in matching funds. So now, all funds that have been donated and all funds that will be donated up to half a million, she'll be matching, which is insanely awesome. But I just want to make sure everybody had heard that. We do have now quite a few new members. So we have three members who, I guess, just ran out of gas for the committee, and so we have six new members to bring on board, and so I just wanted to read those names. Those are Brady Ballard, Ephraim Franco, Don Perrin, Daisy Barrigan, Kim Richardson, and Trevor Steves. And so I wasn't sure if that needed to be approved or, or not, but I just wanted to let everybody know, I guess, that. And in addition to myself, and Rudy Martinez, and Amy King, and Mark Dacken, we're still...
Could you read those names again, please?
Sure, yep. Brady Ballard, Ephraim Franco, Don Perrin, Desi Barrigan, or Daisy Barrigan, sorry, Kim Richardson, and Trevor Steves.
Desi what?
Daisy Barrigan. She works at Bell Bank.
And the name before or after that, I can't remember?
Um, Kim Richardson.
Kim, okay.
And Trevor Steves was the last one. And so that, I don't know that, and do I need approval? Okay, great. And then the last part was, we wanted to ask permission if we could install a sign now that we've reached a little over 1.7 million dollars in fundraising. We were hoping to, we had wanted to do this earlier. West Central Initiative said to hold off until we reach this mark, and we wanted to put up a, one of those thermometer signs, just to show the fundraising and kind of encourage people to... just to show the fundraising and kind of encourage people to let them know we're still working. And at the bottom has the www.pelicanrapidspool.com. And we would hope that that could be installed just in front of where the new pool is kind of facing 108 there in that green patch. Hopefully, it won't be up long because we'll get our goal quick.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve, so.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Here we go, all in favor. Say if I was saying aye.
Aye.
For the same, motion carried.
And that's all I have.
Okay, Kate, while you're there, also on the agenda is the pool committee minutes.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions on those? If not, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Okay, let's go back to item number 10. We're talking about removing late fees on utility bill. Those were included in our packet. Ottertail County, we were told, does not play, pay late fees, something I did not know.
Danielle, could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Well, I, I mean, I don't really, they sent the letter, so I don't really know if I have a whole lot to elaborate on. They just said that they, they don't, their practice is not to pay late fees, and so they're not going to pay the late fees.
I want to do that, too.
That's pretty convenient.
And then.
The only way to do that is don't be late.
Yeah.
What's the bill, what's the bill line?
It was actually their November payment was due November 15.
For what bill?
Water.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it was for utilities. But yeah, so their payment was due November 15, and we received, the city received the payment December 3. And they automatically deposited the funds into our account. And so, I mean, it's not like it was a check that was misplaced or anything. But then they just wrote in their letter that, that they have changed their ACH to ensure that this process, that this doesn't happen again. But we, we don't reverse late fees. That's what they were told when they first contacted us. And so.
What's the council's wishes?
What was their reasoning? If they're direct deposit, how come there was a late fee in the first place?
They don't, they didn't know. I, I mean, this, the person writing it obviously isn't the person that processes the ACH. But they didn't really have, they were surprised that we hadn't received a payment. When they looked into it, they did see that they, that we did not get the payment until later, but they didn't really have a reason why.
So, so if we make a motion saying they don't have to pay it, they won't pay it? If we do nothing, they won't pay it?
No, but it's still being added to their bill as of right now.
But they're going to pay it.
Well, we just don't identify it as a late fee on the next bill. Just make it a part of the.
What precedent does that set? I mean, we have people coming all the time asking for.
If one of us did that, we'd end up paying late fees.
And, and if we didn't pay it, we would continue to compound interest and that late payment would grow forever.
Yes.
Or our service would be interrupted.
Yeah. And, and I mean, I was shocked to hear that, too, because if the city incurs late fees, we pay them.
I move that we deny the request.
How many taxes are late?
Okay, we have a motion to deny the request.
Second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Here we go, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same, motion carried.
Who's going to have fun with this one?
She said it's probably 14 cents.
Four dollars maybe.
Yeah, it's five bucks. I mean.
We spent more on this side, communicating and postage. Okay, item number 11 is pigeons. There's, there's actually one, two, three, we have, we have five motions included in this agenda item. The different ordinances, which we spoke to before our last council meeting, they were posted for 10 days. So now is the time to act. They were posted, and as I gather, there were no comments?
No.
No comments were made. Don, do you have anything there? Okay, so the first one is approving ordinance number 2020 dash 01, section 504, 01, subdivision 1B in the city code. Is there a motion to approve?
First, what, first we have to rescind something, don't we?
We can rescind that. Well, we got to prove this, then rescind.
You can rescind all that at the end.
At the end.
Okay. Well, to speed this up, I'll move we approve 2020-01, 2020-02, and 2020-03.
I'll second. I think everybody's had a chance to read this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Here we go, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same. Okay, then, the last bullet point that I add is to rescind the ordinance fines or administrative penalties relating to having of pigeons before we adopt a disorder.
I'll move to rescind that ordinance.
I'll second.
The fines.
Fines.
Yeah. Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Here we go, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same, motion carried.
Do we have to approve the application in permit form, or is that part of the deal?
That was part.
Oh, no, you didn't do that one yet.
Okay. Yeah, you're right. Pigeon application in permit form, which also was included in our packet.
Make a motion to approve that permit form?
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Here we go, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same, motion carried. Item number 12, public parking lots. Again, ordinances that we've talked about in the past. There's three of them there. Is there anything to add there, Don?
Nope.
I move that we approve ordinance 2020 dash 04, amend chapter 7, part 1. 2020-05, amend chapter 7, part 1 also. And ordinance 2020-06, also amending chapter 7.1.
Second now.
Motion second, discussion, discussion, discussion. Here we go, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same, motion carried. We're down to item number 16, park board minutes. They were included in your package. FYI, any questions relating to the park board minutes? Same done. We'll move on to item number 17, planning commission minutes. Included in your packet, any comments for those?
I, I have a, I don't know if it's a, if this is the right spot or not, but we have a planning commissioner that has been on for, I believe this last January was his one year anniversary, and he's been to two meetings. So I don't know if we, if that has to go through the council as a, to, to remove him, or?
I think it basically starts at the planning commission, and they make the recommendation to council to remove him.
Okay. All right. Just so you know.
Any other comments there? If not, item number 18, local board review. Danielle, do you want to address us at the microphone, please?
I do.
So the local board of review meeting is on Thursday at 2, from 2 to 3. It's an hour. The assessors office will not be coming down here. We will be, Don will be dialing into the go-to meeting and having it up there so everybody can see her. Everybody has been encouraged to call the county beforehand if they want, have any questions for them. And then she also gave me the go-to meeting information, and I've posted that for the public if they want to call in to attend the meeting also. So it was more of just an FYI.
Any questions for Danielle?
There won't be any, any people to come in to plead their case here, or they will be allowed to?
We, we don't necessarily know that. They have not told me that anybody's coming. I'm assuming that that means that they haven't heard from anybody yet, but there may be somebody that shows up and then.
Allowed in is what my question was, okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And then I do need a quorum of people here, council, so.
Any other questions? Here we go. Let's move on. Let's go down to item number 20, city administration report.
Okay, so since the last council meeting, basically, I helped set the agenda and prep for that special meeting and also this regular meeting. I met with Ottertail County Community Development Agency and West Central Initiative and a potential business owner. And we kind of met down at West Central Initiative to kind of talk about some things that, resources that that business owner would potentially have available to them to see if we could get something moving there. Met with the mayor and the library board chair I mentioned earlier to discuss some library things. I also responded in writing to a resident's concern about some city zoning that they had a question about. Spent time researching information to respond to this COVID-19 pandemic. And to be honest with you, we are spending a whole lot of time on this stuff. Some of the things that I do on a daily basis, I come in every morning and I go through my probably 15 to 20 emails from the Department of Health, from the governors, you know, from the state, from D, whatever. And one of the reasons I do that is because one of the things that I've been doing is anything that pertains to business, specifically small business, and the programs that are rolling out on that, whether it relates to unemployment insurance, or, or sick leaves, or whatever it may be for employees. I've been sending that to the chamber so that the chamber can take and broadcast that out to all of their members. And I've, I've sent Nikki Stats quite a few things, actually, and she's been sending them out. I also drafted a, uploaded some things from the CDC, I think I've mentioned, or you might have seen on the city website, so that there's things on the website that pertains to CDC information, water sewer information, just guidances for businesses and then, guidance for business, and then also information in various languages. They're all links. Also prepared, helped prepare the press release and the declaration that was passed at the special meeting. Worked on some workplace posters as it relates to the Department of Health, workplace posters as it relates to sickness and hand washing, and personal hygiene and stuff that we've got posted in our different facilities as reminders to do some things. Also, I've spent time with the departments, and we've talked about cleaning procedures with staff. And, you know, we're doing a lot of extra cleaning that we didn't used to do, wiping stuff down. I also had some conversations with park board and the planning commission as it relates to a land purchase resolution. Will continue to work on that. I've attended three League of Minnesota City webinars with the mayor and also with Danielle that relate to COVID-19 and city issues with the new federal laws and state laws as it pertains to family medical leave, sick leave and all that thing. All those types of things, even though we have, currently there's acts in place, there's been some revisions to them. So we attended webinars to kind of make sure that we're up to date on all of those. And believe me, it's still questions as to how that all kind of relates together with the stuff that was already in place. We've held two emergency management team meetings and discussed the pandemic plan, the state of departments within the city, city facilities. I also had, I've had communication with Ottertail County Emergency Manager. We have weekly update sessions that we do via Zoom or actually go to meeting, just to make sure that everybody's on board with what cities are doing. I let him know where we're at and what we're doing so that he's kind of on top of how we might be able to, they might be able to help us and stuff like that. I spent a lot of time on this, researching these teleconferencing vendors, whether it's Zoom or freeconferencecall.com, or go-to-meeting, or WebEx, or just a bullet of them out there and tried to figure out which one would work for us. Not so much from a cost standpoint, but from a ease-of-use standpoint, because we need to be able to have staff, elected officials that know how to work this stuff. And so I spent quite a bit of time just researching that stuff. And I came up with the Zoom one that we're using tonight, because I think from a technological standpoint, that's going to be about the easiest for everybody to latch on to in the shortest time period. So that's what we'll continue to use at this point. And I've spent time, like I mentioned earlier, just making sure that if we need to, we're able to go and continue to function as city hall remotely, and also city council remotely if it comes to that. So that's what I've been working on.
Any questions for Don?
Thank you.
Item number 19, mayor's report, a few items here. Recently attended the annual Pelican Rapids Fire Department meeting with the town troops at the fire hall. Also attended Pelican Rapids Fire Department's League Association meeting at the fire hall. Met with administrator Solga and library board president Wayne Running regarding the city funding for the library for the COVID adjustments for year 2020, and also thought of all the purpose in the library budget. Telephone call of Patrick of Ottertail County Emergency Management regarding the COV ID status in Ottertail County that we got a couple weeks ago. I contacted Todd Castor of Genio, superintendent Ed Richards, and the Pelican Rapids High School library board president Wayne Running in all regards to the COV ID and the business operations at their facilities. Met with administrator Solga, police chief statem, Park Street superintendent Brian Olson, and clerk Artun in regards to COV ID 19 and City of Pelican Rapids operation. I also called the City of Fergus Falls. That was before our emergency meeting we had on the 20th of February, to see what they were doing there. And we got some, some of the materials to use as we called our special meeting here on March 20. During this time, I've also called several businesses within the community. Also contacted Larson Funeral Home regarding the impact on their business. And Jade from the Funeral Home was here last meeting to share with us. Met with, excuse me, with police chief statem, I attended the ambulance personnel training in regards to the COV ID 19. Attended the Pelican Rapids City Department head's meeting. Set the agenda with administrator Solga and clerk Artun regarding the special council meeting and also the meeting for this evening. Attended Pelican Rapids Special Council meeting on the 20th of March, which you all did on as well. Attended the City of Pelican Rapids Emergency GT meeting on March 23rd and 30th of March, as was also the foster also attended. Attended the League of Minnesota teleconference meetings with administrator Solga and clerk Artun. Spent, I've sent two emails to Pat of Ottertail County Emergency Management as they were wondering, you know, what are we doing here in Pelican Rapids as far as the writers, or what actions are we taking? Attended a Zoom technical meeting here at city hall with city staff, and I've also authored two mayor's films recently in Pelican Press. Any comments? Okay, item number six was Ringdale Ambulance Service, and they are not here this evening, so we will, we will not talk to that. So seeing no other business on the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For the same, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
You were going to the plant to get speed?